I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for being here, welcome all. This evening, we had an executive session prior to this meeting. We have the whole poll.
Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Mrs. Cozer? Mr. LaCassio?
Here.
Mrs. Mayne?
Here.
Mr. McComman? Mr. Muzin?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Sarad?
Here.
Dr. Zort?
Thank you. Okay, solicitors report, Mr. Naples.
You have reported.
Legislative report, Dr. Tepple.
Yes, I'd just like to note that next week on the agenda, there will be a resolution for a resolution calling for charter school funding reform by the Greater Lakehead School District. The Pennsylvania School Board Association has sent out the information pertaining to charter school reform, and this is an annual agreement that school districts do sign, and recommending that we do need reform, obviously with our charter.
Thank you, Dr. Tepple.
Funding, I should say, charter school funding.
Okay, we're going to move on to education planning, Mrs. Mayne.
Thank you. We'll begin with the students. Sophia, just.
Hello. First, a letter was sent to parents of incoming 2020-21 freshmen to inform them about the eighth grade parent scheduling meeting that will take place in the auditorium at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, February 19th. The meeting is designed for students and parents of incoming freshmen and will allow any questions that the parents may have about high school. There will also be a breakfast with champions on February 20th in the CSC at 7:30 AM. On March 12th, student council will host their annual senior appreciation event. It will be breakfast at 8:00 AM, followed by preview performance of Montevia at 9:30 AM. This event is open to GLSD residents 60 and older, and reservations are required. And the junior high spring sports physicals will start on Wednesday, February 5th, and the high school meetup night for middle graders will take place on Wednesday, February 19th.
There's good big going on at the elementary schools. Um, and LES first grade students will go into Fort Ligonier to celebrate George Washington's birthday on February 20th. And then Bagley second grade students will participate in a St. Vincent College online lesson on February 18th, and they'll kick off their annual rock and read-a-thon, which will run from March 2nd to March 6th. That week, they will end their winter, they will end with their winter carnival on Saturday, March 7th. Third grade students will also be holding their annual reporter concert on March 10th. And then Mountview first grade will be visiting Fort Ligonier to celebrate George Washington's birthday as well, but they'll be going on February 18th. And then they will perform the play by George for parents on February 24th, and they'll also be taking part in the celebrate reading week from March 2nd to 6th. Then at all the elementary schools, Russian dance music group will perform for the students, and the dancers will be at Bagley on February 18th, LES on the 19th, and Mountview on the 20th. Parenting Science Center will also present Who Wants to be an Engineer to students in grades K through 6 on March 4th at Mountview, March 5th at LES, and March 6th at Bagley. Also on March 5th, parent teacher conferences will be held from, uh, will be held on March 9th, from the 9th to the 12th, which is K. And then third grade students will have the opportunity to show off their artwork at the third grade art symposium. Lastly, it's almost scheduling time for students in the elementary schools, junior high and senior high. Luckily, we don't have to worry about that anymore. But elementary students will begin scheduling their classes for seventh grade around the last week of February.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of exciting things today. Okay, enrollment report, Mr. Brenner.
I would just note that the kindergarten registration process has begun. Unlike students like Jason who are ending their careers here at Greater Latrobe, we have the class of 2033. Does that sound right? Yeah, hey, enjoy that. But we do have enrollment, there is a parent meeting held on February 3rd, last one day. Online registration is open, there's a link on the website for you to follow, you can do the entire process at your convenience, uploading all of your documents. If for some reason you're unable to submit those documents, you are able to visit our central office, February 10th, 13th, and 14th, uh, between 9:00 and 4:00, and we will help you out with that. And screening will take place March 30th to April 6th of 2020. Do you fact check any back there, elementary principals, 2033? Nice. I hope to be a part of the class of 2030. You can, you can do it.
Next on the agenda, we have data presentations, and I'm going to turn the memory to Dr. Finesse.
I have the pleasure of introducing our principals from all of our buildings tonight. They will be presenting our 1819 data on our student assessments. Fortunately or unfortunately, this is the lens by which we are judged by the state, but we all know there is much more that makes up our students than the information that you see here tonight, but they are going to provide this information for you.
You good?
I'm good.
Yeah. Good evening. The building principals are here, we're going to be discussing and sharing our 2018-2019 data. We are going to be looking at our data this evening through the lens of the Future Ready PA Index. The Future Ready PA Index is a collection of student and school progress measured for our schools and for our student success. This more accurately reports student learning, the growth that the students are making, and success of the classroom and beyond. The Future Ready Index replaces SPP and AYP. Many of you were on the board, we would come up here, we would tell you what our SPP score was, or did he make AYP, or did we not make AYP? So those have long gone away, and so the Future Ready PA Index is what has replaced that. There are three indicators when you look at the Future Ready PA Index. They are state assessment measures, that's our PSSA and our Keystone. Within our PSSA and Keystone, it's not only about the achievement, so did all the students are proficient, are they advanced, but it's also about how they made a year's growth in a year's time. So our state assessment measures both have achievement and growth. Next is on track measures, one of the measures there is our attendance. Then the third measure is college and career measures, which is career standards benchmark, as well as rigorous course of study. So this evening, we will be discussing all of these different pieces of information that is part of our Future Ready PA Index. You see the website there at the bottom, if you go there, you go in as if you're a parent, a staff member, whatever you may be, it actually asks you that, and then you look per building, your Future Ready Index is by building, it's not by district, so it is by building. So we are going to be starting with our state assessment measures. This evening, we are going to be talking about our achievement data, and so we will start with the state assessment measures, and then we will move into on-track measures, and then the college and career measures. So at this time, we're going to be starting with our state assessment measures for elementary. On this slide, you will see that this is a representation of the combined elementary schools for Greater Latrobe School District. You will see, these are the students from grades 3 through 6, and this is a comparison to the state averages. So this is Greater Latrobe School District compared to the state averages. Throughout the elementary presentations of your data, any percentage that is in gold represents a percentage that is greater than the state. So you will see, this is the four-year representation of Bagley Elementary School. This represents all students that took the PSSA each year, so this would include a student who joins the school or the district in the middle of the year, but may not have been here the previous year. So the numbers, these are not cohort numbers, these represent all students that have taken the PSSA. So I would say that this chart reflects more curriculum instruction than it does student growth. Over this four-year period of time, we have spent time providing professional development to our staff, focusing on the skills that are related to the PSSA. For example, and you will hear this tonight, text-dependent analysis questions, AKA TDAs, can you hear that? We've done development on effective strategies, close reading. We have also started to focus our ELA instruction on standards and using our textbook as a tool to teach those standards. We most recently have put that same practice into place with our math curriculum, we will discuss that this evening as well. We have rewritten our math curriculum based on the standards to help improve our scores in that area. Next up, Ms. Caller, will speak to Latrobe Elementary.
Maybe we don't want to look at the last line. Anyway, on the screen, Latrobe Elementary's screen looks the same as Bagley Elementary in the format. You will see the four years, and like what Mrs. Stewart said, when we look at this data, we do compare it to the state averages, but we also look for the trends. So when I look at the data, I can see how do different cohorts of students do, how do the same cohorts of students do, and from there, as Mrs. Stewart said, we do make curriculum decisions, we make scheduling decisions, because we may decide that we need more time to focus on a particular topic or skill. We make instructional decisions. So that, that's our scores for Latrobe Elementary School. And up next is Mrs. Palace for Mountview.
So similar to Bagley and LES, it's the same type of chart, so you can see over the past four years, again, you can see everything there is gold because it is above the state average. However, also, whenever you are looking at this data, you are looking, this is the percentage of students that are proficient and advanced. So this percentage is very important because we know that these students have mastered that standard at this time, their grade level standard, but then when you also dig deeper into that number, you can also see what percentage of that percentage were proficient, but then also what students within there are advanced, and then we look at that student compared to him or herself to see, did they make a year's growth in a year's time? Because again, this is achievement data, this means that they have achieved our state standard at that grade level. We have some students that walk into our classrooms that have achieved the state standard the first day of class, but they too need to grow a year in a year's time, and so that information is also important. So tonight, we're looking at achievement data, but there's also pieces of data too that we look at that is the growth data, a child being able to say, I made a year's growth in a year's time.
So as the three of us collaborate, which we do a lot, and because you will see on those screens, a lot of our scores are similar, and it just shows that what we have done at the elementary level is consistent. And as the three of us talk, we realize, based on the scores, that we have three focus areas for the elementary schools in Greater Latrobe. The first focus area for us is math, and we've talked about math for a few years, but we had the opportunity to meet last June, we had 21 teachers, three teachers in each grade K to 6, we had five sessions, and as Mrs. Stewart had said earlier, we took the state standards and we focused on those, and we are using our textbook, our Go Math, as a resource, as well as a lot of other resources, to help our kids and instruct our students to meet those standards. So we are hoping as, as we go through this curriculum, when we revise it, we're using our in-service days to do that, that we are going to see the improvements that we all want to see. We're not okay being better than the state. That's not okay for us, that's one bar, we want, we have high expectations. So that was one thing that we've done, is revise the curriculum and continue to revisit it this year. The next piece that we've added is what we call Acadian's Math. Some of you may be familiar with Dibbles, we use that as a reading screener. The company was bought, and the name is now Acadian's. We've implemented that in kindergarten, first and second grade this year, and it's a screener that tells us at that level which kids are falling behind, and then we have a plan, which I'll talk next, to help them gain ground and get them back on the grade level. We've also implemented a classroom diagnostic tool that came about last year, which we did professional development with. We have found that we're better at using the tool this year to make decisions regarding students and their needs. So by using those two assessments, one for primary, one for intermediate, we have implemented a map with math interventions this year. This is the first time ever, I have to give a lot of credit to Dr. Teresa Vasinco, she was the guru behind this, we work closely with her, and we, along with her, created our own intervention system. We looked and researched and looked, and we could not find anything that could meet our needs. So we created our own, everything that we do is research-based, we added an intervention time to our schedule, so that our classroom assistants, as well as our teachers, are providing interventions or enrichment, we do have students who need enrichment too, during that period. We are hoping with all of that combined, that we will begin to see better results than what we have.
Our next area of focus, the TDAs, text-dependent analysis questions. Upon digging deeper into our data, our PSSA data, we noted that our students' performance on those multiple choice questions that are related to the core standards, on average, our students were proficient. But then we dug deeper into the text-dependent analysis question, and that's what was pulling our scores down. What we did then, let me explain to you that, that percentage to you. A text-dependent analysis question is worth 25% of the PSSA test. So you get a rubric, and you score anywhere between a zero and a four. That score that you get is weighed four times, so if you got a three on the TDA, that is 12 points. If you dig into the multiple choice questions, you have numerous multiple choice questions on a standard, and it ranges from 15 points to 23 points. So the highest you can get on a TDA is 16, and compare that, that's one question compared to an entire test of standards. So it weighs heavily. So we decided that that was going to be one of our focuses, and the solution that we came to was the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit. Joe DiLascante, I always say incorrectly, has been coming to the district, he will be here on Friday as well, and he is giving our teachers professional development on the TDA, is the state's trade on text-dependent analysis questions, so we are working to improve that score. And finally, our last area of focus in elementary is growth mindset. We are using this book, The Growth Mindset Coach, this school year with our teachers. We meet monthly with our teachers, doing our monthly one-hour professional development, and we focus in on one chapter each month. Within this book, it is shifting mindsets from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset. We are then instructing our staff during the professional development, who then are able to take what we did with them, the activity, to then turn it over into their classrooms to help children change from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset. So here are some of the shifts that you're hearing from our staff and from our students. At one point, and still sometimes you might hear, math is not my thing. How often have you heard, math is not my thing, that's fixed mindset. That is shifting to, I have not mastered that yet. And we call it the power of yet in our elementary schools, and you hear kids say it all the time, you hear staff members say it all the time. I don't know that yet, meaning I can still grow and I can master that. We are shifting from saying, I am not good at this, to I might need to change my strategy. I didn't get it right the first time, and that's okay, I'm going to change my strategy and try it again. We are shifting from, she's the smart kid in the class, to hard work pays off. Hard work and effort pays off in the classroom because we all need to grow, no matter where you started, we all need to grow that year's, year's time, year amount in a year's time. We are shifting as teachers, you might hear a teacher back in the day say, oh, you're so smart. Now we are shifting to, I like how you use different strategies to figure out these problems, it's about their thinking. We are shifting from saying, you're wrong, it's not right, to, hmm, that didn't work out for you, how could you approach that problem differently? All of this, in the end, we hear kids constantly saying, I can grow my brain. They are realizing that their brain is not stagnant, they are realizing that they have to exercise their brain day in, day out, because we can all grow our brains. And that is shifting from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset. So not is it just about, did I get an A on the test, or did I pass that test, it's about, I want to learn the information because I want to grow as a learner. And so we are working on that, both for us as the adults, because some of us have fixed mindsets in parts of our lives, or more than parts of our lives. We are trying to shift that mindset for us as the adults, but then also for our children, so that our children understand it's not just achievement, it's also about their growth. And next up, we have our junior high, with Mr. Shippitz.
Okay, I have just two grade levels to review. You guys broke the 30-minute barrier there, we all said. The two grade levels, obviously, at the middle school, grade 7, grade 8, very proud of our group this year. If you look at that first column, 1617 school year, and then you compare it to the 1819 school year, we made some pretty significant growth in achievement, specifically in grade 7. You can see that 71 in 1617, we're now at 78, and we grew a little bit from last year, but we're maintaining at a pretty high level of that ranking. You can see the state average, and you can also see our county rank is third, and I look back in 1617, we were down at around eight or nine in the county in that year, we really gained a lot of traction that way. Math 7, couldn't be more proud of this team of teachers, although we're second in the county, that's, that's sort of a rallying crowd for us. That second in the county, that jump from 51 to 66 in one year, that made us first in the county as far as P-Boss growth scores. Never seen a 15-point jump like that, and so I go to a lot of middle school principal meetings, and they all touted that. And that group in particular, there's not one math 7 student that says, I have Mrs. Dillon for math, or I have Mrs. Gresson for math, they have all three teachers, because those three teachers flexibly group their students, they move them around each week, they say, these students are struggling here, these students need a little bit of enrichment in this area, and so our 7th grade students as a whole, 300 students, know all three math teachers because they're doing that kind of work with GATA to really reach them. So really proud of that group. Grade 8, again, you see that first column to 1819, they made a huge jump from 64 to 78, they maintain, you can see the state average, that we're above in all of those categories, but as mentioned, that's not our barometer, you can see our county rank there, doing very well. Math 8 has been our sticking point, it's been our sticking point for years, I said that last year. Now, math 8, our students, when they go into 8th grade, they either take general math 8, or they take Algebra 1. If a student takes Algebra 1, which is approximately, last year was approximately 130 students, those students take this test, the PSSA, and they take the Keystone exam, which counts for the high school. Those students who are in Algebra 1, which is a little bit less than half the class, they scored 93% achievement proficiency on that test. They go and they take this math 8 PSSA, and you can see across the state, the state average is extremely low, I talked about those meetings I go to, we are 7th in the county, we're all sort of logjam, right around 50, and it's been something that we're coming back to over and over again, and looking at the state tests, it's been very difficult with how they're, they're assessing that. And then 78, you can see from 1617, a 10-point growth to 1819, they did a great job, you can see the state average, we're well above, and our county rank. We do receive a building score, and I put that kind of in the fine print below, and we had a 79.3, which ranked us third out of 20 middle schools in the county, and that was top 50 out of the 500-plus middle schools statewide, and that 79.3 has to do with this achievements score, has to do with growth, year in and year out, has to do with attendance, has to do with a few other factors that go in there, but we're extremely proud of that ranking, but we certainly have some room to grow, specifically in some areas with math and English, we want to see some work over there. And so again, just areas of focus not to repeat. We also, text-dependent analysis, students are given a prompt on these tests, and they see it over and over again, and they're asked to go into a text, they're asked to regurgitate what they just read, cite facts, and be able to make a strong argument, that's, that's a challenge, and that text gets a lot more difficult into the middle school levels and then on the high school, and so we continue to make that our focus. Establishing a growth mindset, it's CBT testing, that's classroom diagnostic tool. Our math teams in particular are starting to give CBT tests, and what those are, benchmark tests, that they're going to give students at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, if they just started that. And the whole point, to piggyback off what elementary said, is to establish that growth mindset, we want to be able to sit down with each student, middle of the year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and say, you're still struggling with numbers and operations, you're still struggling with factory polynomials, and that can be different across the board with students, but we really want to individualize that with them, talk to them about it, really say, if they don't know what they're specifically struggling with, they don't know what to focus on. So we've just started using the CBT testing this year, and we're hoping that really boosts our scores, especially in mathematics. Career readiness, we've started something, we're going to talk about careers coming up, that's another part of our assessment. We've had every 7th and every 8th grade student this year, it's mandatory during their Wildcat time, they have to pick a guest speaker to attend, and they get to pick based on a career interest, and we've had fantastic volunteers from our community, we've had a veterinarian, we've had an engineer, we've had police officers come in and do career speeches for our students, they sign up, they have to do one in 7th grade, they have to do one in 8th grade, but we've had multiple, and that's just one they have to do, but we've had kids do multiple guest speakers just because they're so interesting to take part in. We want to continue our character education, we can talk about test scores, but especially at middle school, we're, we're really invested in the Choose Love movement, I know Mrs. DeCastro and Mr. Joe talked about this a month ago, we had a school that was coming out to our, our building, and our last PD, she was a mother of a student who was killing the same book, and it was just extremely powerful to talk about some of the character tools of courage and forgiveness and compassion, and there's pillars that we are going to start to talk about many lessons with our students, and really, that's, that's the stuff that we all kind of want to hang our hat on with, with our kids doing great things around here, but we want to continue that character education. And then continuing and enhancing Wildcat, I've talked to you guys about this before, every single day, our teachers work extremely hard, make pool kids every day, they all have a bid day, math teachers, English teachers, science teachers, and they work really hard to say, this student is struggling in this area, and they have to come to me during Wildcat time. It's a very systematic program, and we've seen some results, achievement applies, but we want to keep enhancing that, so that's that. Ms. with the high school.
Hey, thanks.
Okay, as you probably, as you recall, the high school is based off, its assessment measure is based off the Keystone exams, we have the English Language Arts, the Algebra Biology, and just to refresh your memory, students take the English Language Arts Assessment in 10th grade, the algebra, we have about a third of our students taking that test with the junior highs, Mr. Shippitz referenced, in 8th grade, the other two-thirds are taking in 9th grade, and all students take biology in 9th grade. You can see our scores, we had 82% proficient or advanced in the English test, 70.7 in algebra, 82.7 in biology, and I will tell you, our biology teachers, that team of teachers have done a tremendous job over the years, they are constantly in the top 3, 2, 3, 4 in the, in the county. Our English Language Arts teachers jumped up too, in the past year, from 7 to 5. Our algebra has slipped a little bit over the course of last year, but I have two outstanding teachers, Emily Feodor and Lisa Vincic, doing a lot of great things in personalized learning and self-paced learning, and I expect that score to shoot up rapidly here over the next couple of years. Also wanted to talk about the NOKI, we had 66 Uh, we had sixty six, uh, students were going to reach out, taking the NOKI at EWCTC this past year in twenty nineteen. All but six passed, so ninety one percent of those students, uh, passed the NOKI, which, which is a testament to EWTC, EWCTC and the staff there, uh, Mr. Campbell and, and Mr. Limber. Um, and, and another reason I mention this, uh, starting with the class of twenty twenty two, uh, students are gonna be required to pass the Keystone exams to graduate. Uh, the governor Wolf signed into law numerous different pathways, um, that if students don't pass the Keystone, there are other ways to graduate. One of those pathways is if a student earns a passing grade, uh, in the Keystone exam course along with passing the NOKI, uh, that would leave the graduation requirement. So, uh, that's outstanding to see that we have that high percentage of students, uh, passing the NOKI. Uh, our areas of focus, um, obviously with students taking the Algebra Bio test in ninth grade, that's where our focus is and that's where we're putting all our efforts. We've noticed over the years that, uh, if students don't pass the test the first time, we, our passing rate the second and third time, uh, is not great. So we're putting all effort in to try to get that student to pass the test the first time. Uh, that's why we have our teaching assistants there. Uh, I mentioned Emily Fiedor and Lisa Vinsick, uh, their P-Boss growth scores are dark blue, both of them. Uh, for this past year, that's the first time I've seen that in algebra in a long, long time. Uh, so they're doing great work with the personalized learning, self-paced. I was just in Melissa Vinsick's class today, I observed her, uh, talked to a lot of students. They love that learning style. They would not go back to the traditional method. They liked their, their control and the pace in that class. Uh, learning for mastery instead of learning for grade, this is our focus. And I'll give you a prime example of this. I was in an AP class today and had a great discussion with students on class rate, GPA, valid Victorian. And I threw the question out to them. I said, if I gave you everybody in this class a ninety five percent right now, but you didn't learn the material or you earned an eighty five and you learned the material, which would you take? And I'm guessing twenty three out of twenty five would take a ninety five percent. So that's, we have some work to do. Uh, and there, there's some things that are in place with Portrait of a Graduate, Dr. Tepper, Dr. Conister, going to be coming down the pipe that we're gonna need your help with, uh, to kind of change that culture, to put the focus on learning, uh, instead of putting it on the grade. Uh, relationships and culture, if, if you look at student engagement from a time the students in first grade, ninety five percent of students are engaged in first grade. I know that firsthand, my daughter's there, uh, to when they're in ninth grade, uh, it drops to thirty four percent. So we're trying to do everything we can to build relationships with students and staff and create a culture where students want to be in this building. We feel if we have a great culture, great relationships, our test scores will come up. We're also focusing on remediation during lunch and learn. And obviously, and always, there's, um, we're trying to improve critical thinking and problem solving. Those are two, um, skills that students are going to need once they leave us. Those are skills employers are looking for. Uh, and we're, we're still focused on that project based learning. We have two, two great classes, uh, going on right now. We're looking to add more, uh, down, down the road. Another piece with that learning for mastery, the, uh, another piece of conversation that came up, we talked about waiting AP classes. And one thing that came up, anatomy and physiology is a great class. It's a hard class. It's offered, Gentleman teaches it, does a great job. But students have openly admitted today that they do not take that class because it's not weighted. So if they earned an A in anatomy, technically they have a bubble four point O already, that A in anatomy is pulling them down. So we have some serious, like I said, there's some serious work to do because we want students with our career pathway program, we want students taking classes that they have an interest in, uh, in classes that they really enjoy not to take them just to boost, uh, their GPA. Um, as Mrs. Paul has mentioned at the beginning, there's several other measures that can factor into our future ready index. You want track measures, uh, the attendance, you can see the elementary are outstanding. Uh, the high school is the worst, eighty two point two. Now I will tell you, uh, we're not satisfied with that. And, and talking with other principals across the county, across the state, there's a lot of inconsistencies on how attendance is taken. Now I'll give you an example, if one of our students, uh, has an early dismissal for nine thirty in the morning, we count that as a half day absence. I will tell you, other neighboring schools do not. Uh, they count that as an early dismissal, which does not get factored into their attendance rates. So we're working with Dr. Conis, Dr. Tepper, Mr. Krunka, uh, to kind of get us in the, in the level playing field. It's things that we have to play in that game, uh, but that's something that we're gonna have to do to be competitive with other schools, uh, around us. Uh, the career benchmarks were all outstanding. Uh, you can see students grab, or students produce minimum of six pieces of evidence. Those evidence, uh, uh, could be reflections at the high school. We have students that they go out and see something in the career field. They come back and write a reflection on it. Uh, we have career speakers, guest speakers, job chapters, mentorships, job fairs. Uh, we're all at a hundred percent and I'm guessing there must be one student later on, I'll mention that produced five pieces of evidence, it's a six. Uh, and finally, uh, this is something that high schools proud of, the regulars course of study. Uh, ninety seven point one percent of our students, you can look at the definition, is defined by taking an AP class, um, dual credit course or a CTE program of study. Ninety seven point one percent of our students are participating in our, in our regulars course of study. So certainly proud of that. Uh, as Dr. Conis said at the beginning, obviously this is one measure, but I will tell you, I've been in all the buildings. We have many, many great things going on, uh, besides data. And I would, I'll be the first one to tell you, uh, the high school data is not our focus. Our focus, as I said, is creating an atmosphere, uh, where students want to be, build the relationships, create the culture, um, and, and create that, produce that engagement level that's above thirty four percent. So any questions, uh, you have the team behind me, they will certainly build them for us.
Sure, Mr. Reva.
Um, I guess perhaps for the elementary, um, principals, I'm, I'm interested in the growth mindset and, and I heard you speak on that, um, in another meeting. Um, I, I see it in the elementary schools as being sort of an encouraging thing, like a lifestyle, a thought process perhaps. So, and then maybe more specifically secondary schools, um, as far as their actual classes, where their strengths are and their root. So I'm just wondering, what are you seeing with the little ones at the elementary level as far as, um, can you get that message? Are you finding enthusiasm and acceptance in the upper grades, the fifth grades, sixth grades, when they're starting to have, you know, maybe not quite be so easily sold on our emotions?
Absolutely. And I'll speak to it in the two one of China. Um, I think what is important is, you know, in the past, it was about, I'm getting this grade of an A or B or whatever it may be. But now we have our assessments that it is them against themselves. So they take, we, we progress monitor our students. They have an A line, right? Your A line is different than my A line. The important thing is that I'm trying to reach for my A line to show that I'm making growth. And so what we are cultivating with students is that they are growing, not necessarily going for the A or getting the extra credit or whatever it may be for your GPA. It's about that I'm growing every day. I learn something new every day that I'm at school. So it's not passive learning, it's active learning because I want to learn, not because I have to learn. So what you see from students, um, you see them celebrating their own successes because what I need to get, maybe my, um, my growth is that I need to have a hundred and six words per minute. The kiddo sitting next to me might need seventy two words per minute. The kid sitting next to him or her might need, all of our goals might look different, but it's about making that year's growth in a year's time because everybody has their goals. So we do that through our Cadence Math in, um, K two, CDTs and three through six for math. And then for reading, we do that with the Cadence Reading K to six and CDTs three to six. So they're constantly looking at, how am I doing on these standards? And what my personal goal is for reading or for math? Does that answer your question? So how does that cultivate it or what does that look like? That looks like kids wanting to, um, to learn it, to be more knowledgeable. Um, another thing that would look different in the past was like, you took a test and I got an A, I got a C, I failed the test, we moved on to the next thing. It's not like that anymore. It's, I took a test and I didn't master the standard yet. So I'm going to continue to learn. I might come into Wildcat time and to learn it, might go to do some remediation and then I will retake that assessment because I want to learn this information. It's not, oh, that chapter's gone and I'm moving on to the next thing and oh, well, I, I got an F on it. It's, I want to learn it, I'm going to retake the test to show that I have mastered it. Um, does?
And this is a new thought process this year, so are we, am I right?
So we have started to try to get there. We've been using our benchmarks, we've been having this assessment system. But as far as transitioning our kids to using that type of language and to be very, um, specific with the instruction of that, that type of, um, conversation, that's new this year. And the mindset is for teachers too, which is a change. Um, it goes back to feedback. And then you used to get a test back and it was marked wrong, right? And you didn't know why it was wrong, you just get a test that's wrong. Now we have teachers writing, not yet, try this strategy. If you're still struggling, come see me or let's work this out together. So that they see that growing process is a team effort, um, and you're going to get it, just not yet.
It's modeled, uh, in the classroom. When you're in the classroom, the teacher's in the front and they're modeling all the verbiage and actually the thought process behind it. And you can see a difference. We were getting students that didn't have a lot of stamina to continue. The minute that they got something wrong, they just quit. So we realized we had to do something and, and we found that the growth mindset, all the research behind it is really good. So we're just starting.
So it seems sort of, Mr. Mink, the same thing you're talking about then when we come to the AP level courses in senior high, then the question of, you know, getting through to them that same mindset basically is the same thing of, are they taking the AP for the grade or are they taking the AP for the enrichment? But then societally, how are we, like, is that? I have one that graduated a couple of years ago, you know? And so is, is that still a fear of, if I don't take the APs, will I get my school of choice? So somewhere along the way, does society make the vision to make these acceptable and not just today's cool thing?
I think there's parent pressure, parental pressure to take the APs. Uh, their friends are taking the APs, so they need to take the APs. And you mentioned that they need to get into college. I was, you know, they feel like if they don't take the APs, they won't get into college.
So it's a, it's a turnaround we're still waiting for at that level then? Is societally?
Uh, I think that definitely.
It's still a battle?
Correct.
And I think if I can interject again, it is a process. It is a process. And that's one of the main reasons we are implementing the Portrait of a Graduate is to, um, basically share and educate what, what, uh, students need now in twenty twenty to be successful. Um, at the retreat, we talked about Google stating, no, we need people to problem solve, critically think. We don't need number one in the class. Um, but it, it's, it's a process. It's definitely a process. And what I loved hearing is about retaking tests, having students learn the content. And we still have some issues where, you know, there are different philosophies on that and different philosophies, philosophies on that at the secondary level. Um, and it's working through that, having these conversations, um, but utilizing that thought exchange that we will be implementing to have those conversations and, you know, to break down those barriers. It is not going to happen overnight.
Oh, no.
Yes, but there are school districts who have gained, you know, they really have, uh, gained a lot of groundwork here, um, who are, who are looking at, hey, are we going to do class rank? No, we're not. Are we doing valid Victorian? No, because you take that away and then it's learning to learn. But it, again, it is a societal shift.
Absolutely. And as we had mentioned, our professional development, when we present the professional development, it's us presenting it to our staff because we too have to shift from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset because there are things in education that are very much fixed mindsets and it's just because that's the way we do it, right?
And have always done.
Exactly. But yet, we know it needs to look more like a growth mindset. So we presented to them something we're working on together as professional development, then they're able to take it to the classroom. Many times, same exact activity that we're doing with the staff, they can then do with their students. Interestingly enough, our, our children are right there, like, they're, they're into it. They, they have the mind, they want their mind to grow. They don't think like, oh, I don't have it, I don't know, we're gonna do it again. They're very quick to be like, okay, I'm gonna try this again, I want to learn this. But again, we're, we're the earliest, you know, the youngest learners in our district. Uh, but I think you need to work on that culture at that age. When they get up here to John, they might be wanting to talk about, I want to learn this material. It doesn't matter what grade I get, I want to know the material because that makes me, that makes my brain grow. That makes me a better learner and productive citizen.
Yeah, in the old days, we used to say the world was run by these students, you know? But then somewhere along the way, if you weren't a four point plus something, then you, you had different struggles. So it's interesting.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry, you.
Carol Black, if you ever want to look forward in, Carol Black.
Thank you.
I don't want to do that.
You don't have a choice.
Okay, so on your agenda for next week will be, um, a resolution to approve Superintendent Dr. George Tepper to sign any and all contracts with Pennsylvania Department of Education with an electronic signature and that the utilization of an electronic signature shall execute and deliver such contracts binding the realtor's school district to comply with said terms of, I guess it's more like a, a format.
Yeah, standard procedure. Uh, we use the E grant system for, say, schools grants or for our federal programs grants. It just simplifies the process if Dr. Tepper can use her E signature instead of signing and sending off. And, uh, Mrs. Fire, that is private, so she's in the seat. Take your time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the curriculum committee meeting, meeting minutes from Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty are attached. Please read and let me know all the good things that are going on with curriculum and, um, professional development. The curriculum is going on at the school, so it's very interesting. If you have any questions, please bring them back to the suite. Um, the next, um, the curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty at five thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.. Mr. Howard, Friday?
On the, on the agenda for your approval will be the trade and repayment of bills. Also, on the agenda for your approval will be, uh, the approval of gifts, grants and donations as listed. Uh, also, there will be, uh, the approval of the two thousand sixteen tax assessment settlement as recommended by Anderson Price. And also, the approval of electric electricity procurement agreement. Finance committee meeting minutes from January fourteenth are attached. And our next finance committee meeting will be Tuesday, March tenth, at ten AM at five thirty in the senior high school.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Palmer, facilities, operations and planning?
Thanks, Will. Got it. The agenda next week will be, uh, I'll ask the board to approve the government's ink equipment maintenance agreement. Also, the facilities, operations, planning, meeting minutes are attached from February sixth, two thousand twenty. And our next facilities, operations and planning meeting will be Thursday, March fifth, two thousand twenty, three thirty. We need that to be added already.
Thank you, Mr. Tepper.
Thank you. I'd just like to mention, uh, those, uh, committee meeting minutes might be worth everybody taking a good look at it. Kirk, I hope a great deal of information. Uh, it, it does just so much, uh, that we could have spent the entire retreat just on what he was reporting. So if we get that opportunity, please, uh, take advantage of that. Kirk, thank you for you doing that, it was a great job.
Okay, I will take student activities or recreation. Uh, you'll be asked to approve the Makerspace Club. Dr. Tepper, two more.
Absolutely. In our media center at the senior high school, we have a lot of STEM activities going on. And from that student interest, generated student interest, our, um, media center specialist slash librarian was Miss Ree Bolt. Now she is Mrs. Ma Morel, Mamorel, um, who will be the sponsor for this club. Um, it does not have points of honor to it, uh, there is no spike link attached. But since the students are interested, um, she's going to go there.
Thank you. Next week will be asking to approve the junior high, junior high boys volleyball as a school funded, funded team. The student activities or recreation committee meeting minutes from January are attached and the March meeting date will be determined. Mrs. May, it's community relationships. Mrs. May, student relationships, please.
The Litcher GLSC Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held on, sorry, the meeting from January sixteenth, last month, minutes are attached for the result. And the next Litcher GLSC Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be on Thursday, February twenty, at four-thirty P M. We bring the municipal. The intermediate unit, there will be a resolution to approve participation in the W I D joint purchasing consortium for the twenty twenty-one school year, and for the multi-purpose paper day. And a summary of the W I D board meetings are scheduled for late are attached. And the next W I D curriculum, sorry, committee meeting will be Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, at seven P M.
Thank you, Mrs. May. Mr. Muse, would you please take care of the EWCTC joint operating meeting?
Sure. The EWCTC J O C meeting minutes from January twenty-second are attached to board agenda, and there will be open house. The EWCTC on Thursday, February twenty, about five o'clock to seven-thirty. And the next EWCTC J O C meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, about seven o'clock at EWCTC.
Thank you. Board policy, there's a notice to, notice of intent to adopt a number of board policies that are listed, we had talked about those last month as well, so they are all there. And the next board policy meeting will be determined, and it would be held at the administration office. Now, I'm going to go over to Mr. Palmer once again for technology.
Lovely report this evening, however, our next technology meeting will be held Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty, here at six P M at the C I C.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you. At this time, I'll have the superintendent's recommendations, Dr. Tepper.
Thank you. Next week, I will ask the board to please approve the following resignations of Wendy Galley, custodian, and Amanda Hawker, classroom assistant. In addition to approve support personnel classified appointments, Lani Osborne for a personal care assistant, Alyssa Myers, a teaching assistant for English Language Arts, and that would be made retroactive to February sixth. Amanda Hawker to serve as a substitute classroom assistant, and Melinda Woods as a personal nurse assistant. There will also be a resolution to approve support personnel appointments. One for a boys' head soccer coach, and even though our soccer team begins in fall, there is preseason conditioning, correct, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, they do on winter end or fall.
And winter, and there is a reason to ask to have a resolution for Tom Kennedy. And we will also be approving the spring twenty-twenty coaches and salaries. There will be a memorandum of resolution, a memorandum of understanding for employee personnel matter zero-one for the nineteen-twenty school year.
Please.
In other business, this Friday, we do have a teacher service day, so happy Valentine's Day with students, no school for the students, but due to our snow day last Friday, Monday, January seventeenth is a snow makeup day, so students may certainly mark that on your calendars. As our students already discussed, our eighth grade will be up night for parents and students February nineteenth at six-thirty P M in the high school auditorium. Hard to believe, we're coming, winter into spring, Redskins and Champions, again, Thursday, February twentieth. Again, to have not had the opportunity to attend that ceremony, please, if you have forty-five minutes in the morning, we would love to have you there. Senior High School Mamma Mia musical is coming up for March thirteenth and fourteenth at seven-thirty P M, and Sunday the fifteenth at one-thirty P M. Mrs. Verhossi does have tickets, if any of our board members would like tickets, please see Mrs. Verhossi. Parent teacher conferences were mentioned by the students as well, Thursday, March fifth, from five to eight. And our junior high musical, Willie Wonka Junior, will be held again in March, March twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. In addition, we will be, we will have our regular board meeting next Tuesday, February eighteenth, seven-thirty P M, here at the Center for Student Creativity. And next month, in March, our committee of the whole, Tuesday, March tenth, and our regular board meeting Tuesday, March seventeenth.
Thank you, Dr. Tepper. Is there anything else that any of the board members wish to bring up, which we discussed? Hearing none? Thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.